Our regular city commission meeting order, please rise for the information of my pledge allegiance to the flag, second commission event.
Father God, thank you for today. Thank you for the opportunity to come together, Lord, and to make decisions. Please give us wisdom, watch over our staff and our first responders, in Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is approval of our amendments that made the ninth meeting, they have been distributed. Are there any additions, revisions, or corrections? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion approved, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a presentation here at the seating, Senator Geraldine Thompson.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone and to have the opportunity to give you an update on what we have done in Tallahassee. We had a number of special sessions and we had our regular sixty day session that ended in March. And so I'm glad to be able to come back to my district, Senate District fifteen, to let you know some of the things that we focused on. I'll start first with the budget, which has not yet been signed by Governor DeSantis, but some of the things that were included in the budget that impact Orange County are shown here on the PowerPoint. A number of items dealing with our public schools and dealing with education were placed in the budget. And so we're waiting, we always wait anxiously for the budget to be signed because that then means that some of the things that we put in will survive the veto ban. But in terms of the budget that passed, there were fifty million dollars in general revenue that went to different items, over sixty-eight billion in trust fund spending, ten billion in reserves, three percent pay increase for all state employees, and that makes my staff members very happy. Thirty point one billion for education funding, forty-six point five billion in healthcare and human services, seven point three billion for criminal and civil justice, twenty point four billion for transportation, tourism, and economic development, and nine point nine billion for agriculture and the environment. We had over one hundred and seventeen billion dollars that we had to allocate to the different areas that I spoke about just a few minutes ago. One of the things I want to bring to your attention because it impacts our municipalities, both the city and county governments, House Bill and Senate Bill that focuses on employment regulations, restricts local governments from setting minimum wages that are different from the state or the federal minimums. So prevailing wages would not be allowed, even though we know that it costs more to live in Dade County than it does, let's say, in Levee County. But local governments would be restricted from setting minimum wages that are different from state or federal minimums. Local governments would also be prohibited from requiring an employer or government contractor to meet or provide heat exposure requirements. That one concerned me a lot because we have a lot of outdoor workers. They are on rooftops, they're laying sod, they are farm workers. And municipalities now would not be able to set safeguards to provide them water, rest, or shade. And I have been in the legislature for a while, and I remember when we put in place safeguards for athletes who are practicing. And we must provide water. We must provide shade if their body temperature goes up too high. We have immersion tubs for them. But we're saying that outdoor workers could not have the same kind of protections. It prevents the favoring of businesses based on their wage structure, employment, and this or work environment, and competitive solicitation processes, and prevents local governments from imposing regulations on private employers with regard to schedule. Now, I've been a big proponent since I've been in the legislature of home rule. I think that local elected officials should have the latitude to come up with local solutions to local problems. And the trend has been preempting everything to Tallahassee. So I wanted to make you aware of some of those preemptions. We also passed legislation that allows minors fifteen years old and under to work until seven PM on school nights with a weekly maximum of fifteen hours during school periods. It permits sixteen and seventeen year olds to work until eleven PM on school nights, more than eight hours on holiday or Sunday, and up to thirty hours a week during school. And my bias, because I'm a former college administrator and teacher, I'm an academician, I know that young people need sleep. And so I'm concerned about this particular law that passed that would now allow young people who are still in school to work these number of hours. And it removes requirements for minors to take breaks if working for continuous hours under specified condition, and it allows the parents to waive the work hour restrictions. We know that we have a labor shortage, we have a worker shortage, but putting our children to work is not the solution, in my opinion. I found the bill that was not passed, it failed, and it would deal with voting rights. And we named it the Harry T. Moore and Harry V. Moore Florida Voting Rights Act. And it would have dealt with a number of issues, including allowing people to use vote by mail ballots until they cancel the request for those ballots. Now, people have to request those ballots every election cycle. That is something new. It would provide for same-day voter registration with technology. We are now able to find if a person lives in a particular place and get them registered on the same day. But our current laws do not provide for that. And it provides a centralized database for people who had felony convictions and who are returning to our society to know if they have outstanding legal obligation. Right now, there's no centralized database. You can go to the Department of Corrections, the Department of Offender Review, the Department of State, the Clerk of Court, and it's just a vicious cycle. So that is one of the things that I wanted to address, but that bill failed. Also, we had legislation that was offered that would give election workers protection because there's a lot of polarization, unfortunately, in our society, and our election workers are being threatened. But that bill failed. We did pass legislation that would allow for three licenses for black farmers who have been part of a lawsuit and shown discrimination. And that would now allow these farmers to participate in the medical marijuana industry, which is going to be on the ballot in November. And if it's going to be legal, I think everyone should have a level playing field in terms of being able to participate in the industry. We had a bill that would protect historic monuments and would fine local governments if they relocated monuments, particularly Confederate statues. That bill failed. Legislation was passed to prohibit impeding or harassing first responders. And so it prohibits individuals from approaching or remaining within twenty-five feet of a first responder who gives them a verbal warning with the intent to impede, threaten, physical harm, or to harass. And one of my concerns about this legislation is that in any profession there are, unfortunately, bad actors. And we know in the case of Michael Floyd, George and George Floyd, and Eric Gardner, and others, we only know what happened in those situations because someone was close enough to film what happened. And now with this restriction, where is the accountability? That bill passed. Legislation was also passed to eliminate independent police review boards, and it takes away their authority to have oversight and disciplinary power within law enforcement agencies throughout the entire state. We passed the Live Healthy Initiative, which I supported, and it will provide one point five billion dollars in healthcare spending, primarily to address the shortage of healthcare workers, both physicians and other health professionals in the state of Florida. And I'm going quickly because I was given a certain amount of time that I want to get through and respond to questions that you might have. And we're also looking at Medicaid redetermination. During COVID, we relaxed at the federal level eligibility requirements for people to qualify for Medicaid. Many of those people are now being taken off of Medicaid. And so we're looking at redetermination. We had legislation that failed that would have prevented flying flags, pride flags, and would require that on your driver's license, it would list your birth, your sex at birth rather than your gender. That failed. We passed legislation with regard to immigrants, and it establishes harsher penalties for immigrants who were previously deported and then arrested for illegally returning to the U.S. or found guilty of participating in drug cartel activities. We passed legislation to protect minors online. And so children under thirteen would not be allowed to have a social media account. And children fourteen and fifteen would be able to have an account with parental permission. This next bill affects municipalities throughout the state of Florida. It prohibits individuals from camping or sleeping on public property. And so if you observe individuals camping or sleeping, you would have the responsibility of removing them and putting them into a camp that the municipality would be responsible for setting up. And those camps would have to have security and mental health services, hygiene, a whole lot of things. And the state provided no money for the municipalities to do these things that are now required. And I argue that it was an unfunded mandate, but it passed anyway. Another bill that failed would have added a ballot initiative to raise the threshold for approving amendments. We are going to have some amendments on the ballot, and you have to, at this point, get sixty percent of the voters to approve. It would raise it to sixty-six point sixty-seven percent from the sixty percent. And that bill failed. For the general election, we are going to have Amendments Three and Amendment Four. One deals with reproductive rights and having people make their own very private medical decisions rather than having the government make those for them. And the other would be to decide on recreational marijuana. I think I've gone through this pretty quickly. We have some important dates that are coming up. And those are just to remind individuals to the deadline to register to vote or to change their party, the deadline to request a ballot for the primary election. The primary election is August tenth through the seventeenth in terms of early voting. And the primary election date is August twentieth. And then, of course, the general election is going to be nowhere to fail. So I did go through that very quickly. There may be some things that you wanted more information about or questions that you might have, and I'll respond to those.
Do we have any questions from anybody on the commission? That was a pretty good report. Thank you. Senator Thompson, we appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to come out and give us your separate.
Thank you so much. And I am privileged to serve as the senator for the City Winter Garden, and thought that it would be important to let you know some of the things that happened in Tallahassee. I wasn't there, you know, just kind of laughing. We have a lot of work to do.
Well, we certainly right if we look over this and think about things.
I'm right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
According to the plat thereof, as recorded in platform one oh six pages, one thirty-three to one thirty-four of Public Records in Orange County, located at seven sixty-one and seven seventy-one Garden Commerce Parkway, owned by Winter Garden Flex L.C., as more particularly described, and provided for an effective date and recording.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The applicant for this is requesting to vacate a portion of the drainage and utility easements that exist over property located at seven sixty-one and seven seventy-one Garden Commerce Parkway. This property, which is located in the Winter Garden Commerce Center, previously received site plan approval as well as law accommodation approval, which permitted the applicant to develop the site with commercial warehouses and office buildings. And the lot is currently under construction. Staff has reviewed the application and advocates approval of ordinance twenty-four dash ten. Have any answered questions?
Questions from the commission? This is a public hearing, so we will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four ten.
Okay, we have a motion approved, the second meeting, public hearing on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. We have a second. We have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. And public hearing, opposed ordinances, ordinance twenty-four dash oh nine.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending chapter seventy, telecommunications, Article Roman one. In general, City of Winter Garden Code of Ordinances to add requirements for right-of-way permit applicants and registration requirements for communications services provided, providing for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This ordinance, as Kurt said, amends chapter seventy of the City Code, pertains to communication services in the right-of-way. I apologize, a revised ordinance was placed on everybody's chair. The revised one didn't get put in the agenda. This new one actually changes some of the whereas clauses to be consistent with state statutes and mentions those statutes. And there's several other minor changes throughout the clear language. This ordinance has registration requirements, insurance requirements, authorization requirements for their subcontractors, and it requires a cash bond or the city manager the ability to waive that requirement and let them do a bond through a bank. The company is, if they do not repair damages that are made, that cash bond could be used for, or we can call that other bond to make those changes. And staff will recommend approval of ordinance twenty-four dash, sir and I. Have any answered any questions?
Okay. Questions from the commission? This is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash oh nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen, twenty-four dash fourteen, and twenty-four dash fifteen.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately two point two zero plus minus acres located at six eighty-one West Plant Street, north of Plant Street, south of the West Orange Trail, east of Brayton Road, and west of Park Avenue into the City of Winter Garden, Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction, offset property, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash fourteen, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Winter Garden comprehensive plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately two point two zero plus minus acres located at six eighty-one West Plant Street, north of Plant Street, south of the West Orange Trail, east of Brayton Road, and west of Park Avenue from Orange County Low Density Residential to city commercial, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash fifteen, an ordinance of the City of Winter Garden, Florida, rezoning approximately two point two zero plus minus acres located at six eighty-one West Plant Street, generally located north of Plant Street, south of the West Orange Trail, east of Brayton Road, and west of Park Avenue from Orange County A dash one Citrus Rural District. And M dash one Manufacturing District to Winter Garden PCD Plan Commercial Development, providing for certain PCD requirements and describing the development as the Lumen Center property, and providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a city request for annexation of a two point two zero acre property located at six eighty-one West Plant Street, which is the Lumen Technologies or Century Lot Site. The request is for annexation, amendment to the future land use map to designate this property as commercial and rezoning to planned commercial development. After annexation, this lot will be split into two lots. The Lumen Corporation will retain the eastern portion, and the city will purchase the portion to the west. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval and adoption of ordinances twenty-four dash thirteen, twenty-four dash fourteen, and twenty-four dash fifteen. Have any answered questions?
Questions from the commission? This is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishes to comment? We will close the public hearing, and we need a motion.
Mayor, I suggest that you look at them separately.
Separate each one. Okay, we'll take ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen. Need a motion on that?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash thirteen.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance twenty-four dash fourteen.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash fourteen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, ordinance twenty-four dash fifteen.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash fifteen.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Regular business. Recommendation to player vehicles as surplus. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Fleet Department is requesting as a recommendation and motion to declare the list of the level of vehicles that will provide to you a surplus and their authorization for sale as determined by the city manager.
Any questions?
I don't know, I just saw the accent. I think we just haven't talked before.
I mean, the newest was what, seven years old? The oldest was like twenty-one years old, so. We need a motion. So, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve the Orange County interlocal agreement. Yes, sir.
This is interlocal agreement between the city and Orange County, where we are transferring portions of certain roads as outlined in that agreement. We're still working with them to take over more roads, but just pecking away slowly. So staff would recommend approval of the interlocal agreement. Have any answered questions?
Just to add to Steve's presentation, this initiative began in August of twenty-one. Three years to get these, so eventually the other roads, we will take ownership of them.
Trying to get them to do some of the repairs, like how along they paved and finishing it up.
Now, I asked you to make sure that we watched it. When they painted, they did a good job, correct?
Correct.
Any questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve the interlocal agreement.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve state funding revolving fund, one amendment. Yes, sir.
This is an amendment to the revolving fund that we have for the design work on the wastewater treatment plant. It is scheduled to expire this month. The design work will not be completed until the end of the year, which will also put us under construction. So we are requesting to extend it until February fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. That's just increments they do. Staff would recommend approval.
Questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve existing piggyback contract with Clay County Utility.
The city purchases a substantial amount of materials from Corin Maine, that includes pipe fittings, water meters. The contracts that we currently use have expired, and Corin Maine has provided us two additional contracts that they have, one with Clay County Utility Authority and the other one with the City of Wharton Beach. We would request that the board approve us to use these contracts as a piggyback so that we can continue to purchase materials from Corin Maine.
Questions? Are the cost per unit very similar, I assume, since they gave you two different ones?
They are very similar, yes.
If there are no other questions, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the existing piggyback contract with Clay County Utility Authority.
And Wharton Beach.
Wharton Beach.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve site plan for twelve hundred Daniels Road. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval for a one point five five acre lot on Daniels Road. The applicant to HCA Florida Osceola Hospital is proposing to build an eleven thousand five hundred and seventy square foot freestanding emergency room facility on the lot. The applicant receives special exception approval from the Planning and Zoning Board for this proposed use, and staff has a number of conditions that were a part of that approval. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the HCA freestanding emergency room site plan. A representative from HCA, Cameron Howard, is here, and he requests a few minutes to provide a brief statement about this project. And then he is also available for any questions the commission may have on the road.
Well, he's coming up. I will recuse myself, although there's no financial gain for me. I don't want the perception out there that I am biased in any way towards this, so.
And then after speaking, I'm the city attorney. I'm on the advisory board for the Heaven Health Winter Garden, and I also do work with our company, Train, does work for Heaven Health and Orlando Health. So I think I should recuse myself too on the advisory side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Howard. I'm the chief operating officer for HCA Florida Osceola Hospital. It is our intent to build a freestanding emergency department on Daniels Road between West Colonial and the Florida Turnpike. HCA Florida Osceola Hospital has supported Central Florida for over ninety years. And we are part of HCA Healthcare, the nation's largest healthcare system with a hundred and eighty-six hospitals and approximately two thousand sites of care across twenty-one states encompassing physician offices, urgent care centers, ambulatory surgery centers, and freestanding emergency departments. In Florida alone, we operate forty-six hospitals and over thirty freestanding emergency departments, seeing over two point two million emergency visits last year. Our Winter Garden Freestanding Emergency Department is an extension of HCA Florida Osceola Hospital, a licensed four hundred and seven bed, Level Two Comprehensive Stroke Center. Osceola Hospital, a licensed 407-bed Level 2 Comprehensive Stroke Center. It is licensed as an extension of the hospital, meeting the same standards and regulatory requirements of an emergency department on the primary campus. Think of the turnpike as a long hallway connecting the two locations. The facility is open 24/7/365 and staffed with board-certified emergency medicine physicians, emergency registered nurses, and the appropriate support staff between imaging, security, et cetera. It is not an urgent care center. These facilities are efficient and effective emergency care locations. HCA Florida Osceola Hospital currently operates four freestanding emergency departments and we're pretty good at it. Patients are seen by a provider in under five minutes, most patients are discharged in under 80 minutes, and our patient satisfaction scores are above the 90th percentile when benchmarked against national standards. Freestanding emergency departments tend to not be as busy as hospital-based emergency departments. We anticipate approximately 30 patient visits per day, two of which might arrive via ambulance. 95% of patients are discharged from that freestanding emergency department. Regarding the 5%, or one to two patients per day, that need to be transferred or admitted, we can provide those services. Should a patient need to be admitted to a hospital for an inpatient care, the freestanding emergency department will manage the transport of that patient to HCA Florida Osceola Hospital. Should the patient express that they want to be admitted to a different facility other than HCA Florida Osceola Hospital, the freestanding emergency department will facilitate the transfer of the patient to the patient's requested admitting facility, assuming that facility accepts the patient. This is done in accordance with patients' rights as defined by the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid Services, Conditions of Participation, Florida State Law, and the Emergency Medical Treatment and Active Labor Act, or IMTALA. Specifically focusing on patient transport, HCA Florida Osceola Hospital operates an intra-facility transport team of three advanced life support trucks and has a COPCN, or License to Operate, across four counties, Osceola, Polk, Seminole, and Orange. A fourth EMS truck is in production and expected to arrive this September. We are prepared to purchase additional trucks with each additional freestanding emergency department. In review with Chief Graham and Chief Ganza on February 1st, when we shared the information about our EMS and transport team and agreed to having an ambulance onsite or en route, they indicated that we appropriately addressed their concerns and should not impact the local EMS teams. Following that, the planning and zoning board approved the special permit request on March the 4th. Given our experience and proven track record in operating freestanding emergency departments and being part of the nation's largest healthcare system, we're confident in our ability to care for the citizens of Winter Garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to the commission?
I have one question.
Yes.
So, if a patient, so if a patient is in an emergency situation and they do not have the ability to acknowledge that they would like to be at a closer hospital, you would take them to Osceola without them?
If they're not voicing it, right, and they're needing that higher, that additional care, we would transport them to Osceola. That's correct.
I mean, you said you spoke to the chiefs and they said that they're either needed to be in ambulance, and I might have misunderstood onsite or en route?
Yes.
And that was sufficient?
That was.
I know it's a site plan, but I did, you know, have some operational type concerns because I know we, there can't be like a helicopter.
That's correct.
To be able to land. So, my concern would be if someone came in the emergency and they were having a stroke or something like threat, how long would it take to get them to your hospital in Osceola?
So, each one of these freestandings, we have various protocols in place, whether it's around stroke or cardiac event, et cetera. And so, we're able to provide medication there in the field to be able to, like at these events, at these freestanding emergency departments, they are still departments licensed and operated under the hospital. It's the same teams that will be caring for them at the hospital that's here at the freestanding. So, we can stabilize and then transfer that patient, again, should they, should they want to go to Osceola. It take, I mean, we operate, our fleet has lights and sirens, so we can go down the turnpike and get, get down there very quickly. In terms of the helicopter, that's correct, that's one of those site plan things where we said, no, we will not have a helicopter landing there. We operate four freestandings currently. The number of those have been open for eight years, six years, and then two of them within the last six months. We have had one helicopter land at any one of those four sites in their duration of being operated.
I had a level of comfort knowing there was either the special trucks, you were talking about transport trucks, or the ambulance. My concern at this point is that they can just be en route to the center. Do you have any kind of agreements? I don't know how this works.
We, we have agreements with other ambulance services such as AMR and other proprietary groups.
Okay. So, it shouldn't impact according to our chiefs, it shouldn't?
That's correct. We will now be calling the city EMS.
Okay.
I have a question, if you will, if someone is up. So, both, every medical provider seems to be doing these freestanding EDs at a rapid pace. Why? And why are they so popular all of a sudden?
I can't speak to, to why Advent or Orlando Health and others in the, in the community are expanding theirs. I can say we were one of the first in the nation to actually build freestanding emergency departments. And they're, they're popular because they tend to be, you can, you can go and enter a community, provide care, and determine whether or not that, that base is such that, hey, this is where I want to be able to build a future hospital or not. And so, that is, that is one of those access of care points.
Oh, so I'll be even more direct because I'm on the advisory committee and even that hospital chain has turned the corner than where you're going to build these things. But, right after the Healthcare Act was passed, the, it was, the push to healthcare was to try to get people at their primary doctors to get them care there earlier than an emergency room. And it seems like all three of you have decided that you make more money, this is my opinion, that make more money at the emergency room. So, I'm preaching a little bit, but really, all three of you are guilty, so.
City manager had a question. Just a form of clarification, Cameron, if you will, I could have misunderstood the conversation because I was a part of that meeting in February with the chiefs. I thought you had committed during that meeting that there would be a dedicated ambulance at this facility, so when you say there will be one there and service, I presume, or en route, I presume the en route will be because?
Because the one is.
Dedicated ambulance is transporting somebody and we need another transport.
That is correct.
So, there will be a dedicated.
That is correct. So, I mean, if there's one that's there onsite and you load a patient up to take them to Osceola, I'm calling for the next truck to be going here. That's correct.
So, it's going to take more time for you to, you to then come back before you let him?
No, I have multiple, multiple trucks in circulation, so I would have the next truck deployed coming directly here when this one's leaving.
I know it's just site plan, but this is really the only opportunity to, to ask questions, so I feel a little bit better knowing that the chiefs are comfortable and it won't impact, you know, the general need. Yeah. Can I?
Any other questions to the commission?
Well, I won't be making the motion on this one, Mayor.
Why not? Yep. So, if no other questions, then we need a motion.
Real quickly.
Yes.
What were the staff conditions, please?
I'm sorry?
The staff conditions? Sure. Thank you.
So, for the special exception permit that was approved by planning and zoning board, we condition that no helicopters are permitted to land off, land on, or near the facility. The facility will provide an onsite ambulance service as to not negatively impact Winter Garden's emergency services and no sirens are permitted to be turned on during the loading and unloading of patients in consideration of the adjacent residential property. That's during public comment.
Any other questions?
Are there going to be any public comments?
I?
No.
Can I?
Can I have? You can give them a question. I mean, they had the opportunity during, not public hearing.
No, it's not.
But they did have the opportunity during, well, they.
I'm sorry, I don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, if you need to.
I don't mind.
Public comment doesn't come back, yes. Say, sure.
I just want to make sure the commission has any other questions, or is? Okay.
Can we?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Angelia R. Tepardine. I'm a citizen of East Winter Garden. I'm also a licensed clinical social worker, has been in the healthcare field for over 40 years. And one of the things that Chloe and Commissioner Bennett brought up that is concerning mine, even though he said that maybe one or two percent of someone that comes in that needs air transfer, personally, I had that happen to me with my mom. She was not able to communicate whether she wanted to be transferred by grounded air and they called me and on the phone I had to ask them what was her situation and it took me two minutes to get to the hospital and they were going to ground her. And I contacted the doctor where she was going, he says, no, based on the assessment when we talked to the ER doctor, she needs to get there. I requested air transfer and I met the doctor at the door to give him permission to work for my mom. He said, had she not made it there, because she was bleeding internal, she would not have made it. So, my concern is a freestanding ambulance, a freestanding hospital that does not have air transportation. Also, being a social worker, you pay for mileage when you transfer a patient to a facility, you pay for transportation. I'm constantly working with patients to pay for that $82 aspirin that long distance transportation. So, if you got a hospital that is right there, emergency room, they, they just take them that down to the floor, to the room, they don't transfer them to another facility. So, those would be my concerns of having a freestanding emergency room that they have to be transferred to another county to get the services. Thank you.
Thank you. What else?
I just want to ask. When this was proposed.
Thank you, I agree.
Oh, French, no, I told North like you have. When this was proposed to have a freestanding room in another part of town, it was suggested, it was brought up that we, the commissioner who was ever in charge would check with the local hospitals to see if this was needed. This is, you go down Highway 50 and there's places to get help all the way, even a children's clinic right here. Is this really necessary to have another for-profit hospital, emergency room right here? I mean, did anybody ask the other two hospitals?
Oh, yes.
And were they in favor or not? I'm sorry.
I'll recuse myself, so I'll state it out as this. Certainly, they, they have their opinion about, you know, additional needs and whether or not their existing facilities have sufficient beds and wait times and they feel like they there's well within the standards there, so, you know, they're, they're.
Well, my boss really didn't want me to ask, but I know this was discussed at great length before.
I'm sure you.
And it's important, how many do we need? I know we're growing and we don't want to stop, but we don't, that's a road to get out on already. How are they going to stop traffic when it's an emergency? Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think my only final question would be, worst case scenario, someone does need to be seen quicker than 30 minutes of being able to get to Osceola. I don't know how it works with the other hospitals. Is there an agreement or something that you could call Advent or Orlando Health? My, my only concern is?
For the vision.
Yeah. The citizens, the residents.
There's a few different things that I want to be able to address. The first is, again, this is a licensed emergency department, that it falls under the same regulations as the hospital-based campus. And so, from seeing, and it's the same providers that cover shifts at the main campus that also take work and work here at the freestandings we end up rotating around. I mean, case in point, my, one of my lead emergency room physicians lives here in Winter Garden, she's very excited about the opportunity to work at a freestanding that is closer to her home or at that, right? And that's what we're talking about here is the distance and everything else. I'm confident regarding our, our providers and care that they can deliver at a freestanding and be able to make sure that that is the same level of care as a hospital campus. And then, and that is, and IMTALA requires around that stabilization and treatment, and stabilization and or transfer. And so, if this is around, we have the ability to care for that person because they need that higher, the next level of care at the main, at the main campus with additional resources that the main campus may have, we will get them there. Or, we will call the other, you know, call the nearby facility and transfer them over there as, as there is an obligation from their standpoint regarding and receiving that emergency patients as well. So, I'm confident around being able to address that.
Out of your 2.2 emergency million or whatever it was?
2.2, yeah.
And what would you say fall apart the percentages that people have to be airlifted or transported?
Well, that's a, again, that's a 2.2 million emergency visits across the state of Florida last year across the 46 HCA hospitals and the 30 or so freestanding emergency departments. I don't have the statistics in terms of the air flight for each one of those campuses. For our, our freestanding emergency departments, which we operate at Millenia, Hunter's Creek, Airport North, and in St. Cloud, those are the four existing locations. Again, in the years that those four have been open, there has been one air flight.
I know it's a site plan.
Well, no, and those are, and those, and those four last year saw nearly 60,000 visits. One.
Thank you. I have a question. I know that Chloe already asked the question, but I was just to clarify, because I don't understand the law of this so much. If you're transporting someone at a higher level of attendance for emergency and you said that you would ask the patient, but closer, if it's not verbal, then the physician, the superintendent will be the one making that decision to either try to stabilize it or it seems necessary to support her to the hospital, whichever hospital accepts her, or take her back to your location, to your main facility?
So, if a, if a patient needs to be admitted to a hospital, patient has choice regarding that admission. And so, if they, if they say, hey, I would like to be admitted to another facility, unless it's an Advent or Orlando Health facility, we will arrange, help arrange that transfer over to that facility, provided that that patient facility also accepts that patient.
So, I, what will happen is, I went through this on the schedule for Advent Health is, after 24, they can't hold them, a patient for 24 hours as a freestanding ED. They're limited to that. At that point, they have to be admitted to a hospital with beds. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So, I think you guys are trying to say, hey, they're going to transport that person that's stable to their hospital. We get that. But you're asking of the emergency one that can't talk, that needs to go somewhere that they can't take care of.
Well, I was going to ask, you're saying you would call a hospital to make sure that they accept, but I mean, shouldn't those negotiations be pre-forwarded so that when you know that they are going to accept someone?
Other healthcare systems are not, are an obligation to accept a patient.
Great.
Yeah, just for clarification, the use of this property was approved by planning and zoning with, I thought it was six conditions, six conditions, so the use is not an issue. It's really the site plan, whether the site plan meets the criteria, whether the proposed site plan is being considered by you meets the criteria with whatever staff that they could, PNC had recommended. So, that's really the, for the three commissioners up here. to make that call, based on the evidence that's been presented to you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. It's time for a motion.
Motion to approve site plan for 1200 Daniels Road.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carried unanimously, three to zero. Thank you. Thank you. The lighter one now. Recommendation to approve special, and the wine walk.
June 6, 2024, event guests will visit 12 different downtown merchants and sample various wines and foods. All wine tastings will be inside merchant buildings and no alcohol is allowed outside the buildings. The event is proposed to set up at 6:00 PM and break down by 9:15, with the wine, with the wine walk happening between 6:30 and 9:00 PM. Staff recommends approval of the Winter Garden Wine and Wine Walk Special Event.
Questions from the commission? I'll just have to say, I love all the applications, it's Winter Garden Community Choir slash Orlando Coral Society, but when you look at their tax forms, hmm, it's just Orlando Coral Society. So anyway, my sarcastic comment is over. But I do enjoy, Dr. Redding and, Dr. Redding and all what they do, they do a great job. So we need a motion.
Motion to approve the recommendation for the wine walk.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Winter Garden Police Athletic League, Donut Dash, yes, ma'am.
The Winter Garden Police Athletic League has submitted an application to hold the Donut Dash 5K Run. It's starting and ending in Newton Park on Saturday, November 2nd, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. The route will proceed in a loop along segments of nearby streets including Crest, the West Orange Trail, Tilden, Void, and West Garden Avenue. None of these streets along the route will be closed for the event, other than the cul-de-sac at the end of West Garden Avenue. So that's, staff recommends approval of the Pal Donut Dash.
Questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve the Pal Donut Dash.
We have a second? Second. Motion's second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Madgers and citizens of Winter Garden.
Joseph Richardson, 220 North Highland Avenue in Winter Garden, the E. M. E. Mayor and Commissioners. I am an atheist. I do not pray to any deity. I don't believe any deity exists to pray to. Religious freedom affords me this right, and it's also supposed to afford me the right to be free from coercive government influence regarding my choice of religion or non-religion. In spite of that, the mayor recently issued a proclamation for a day of prayer promoting his religion over my non-religion, and excluding me and everyone in Winter Garden like me. Meeting after meeting, I am required to endure the prayers of only the commissioners and only their religions, which means mostly the mayor's religion, since most of the time the commissioners pass their turn to the mayor. Rarely have we heard an inclusive, secular invocation, never have we heard a Muslim invocation. When you have almost exclusively Christian prayers for invocations, and when you proclaim an official day of prayer in undeniably Christian terms, and when you hold winter celebrations with Christian hymns and Christian Bible readings and Christian prayers on the steps of City Hall, and at the same time decline to promote a Jewish celebration because, according to the city manager, it's a religious event, then you are improperly using the power of the government to promote your specific religion and improperly placing it above the religion or non-religion of everyone else in Winter Garden. Whether the courts say it's legal or not, this is the wrong thing to do. It violates true religious freedom and is not just un-American, but anti-American. I think the mayor knows this too, since he bypassed the normal procedures and avoided putting the proclamation on the agenda that week. Regardless, I categorically reject the mayor's proclamation for a day of prayer, and call on the other commissioners to stand up and be clear that such divisive, exclusive proclamations should not be issued. Instead, I request a proclamation for a day of reason, which would apply to everyone. I would be happy to provide sample text for such a proclamation. I further call on this commission to abandon what you know is fundamentally an exclusive invocation practice designed to exclude viewpoints not represented by members of the commission. Finally, I ask the commission to move the light-up Winter Garden ceremonies to someplace other than the steps of City Hall. It could easily be done at the pavilion, which is used for many other large events. In Christianity, free will is a big deal. Salvation depends on the free choice by every human being to follow Jesus or not. And God's.